This is the March 24, 2014 meeting of the Revere City Council. All rise and salute the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call of the members, Councilor Rigo.
Here.
Here, Councilor Gino.
Here.
Here, Councilor Guanasso.
Here.
Here, Councilor Haas.
Here.
Here, Councilor Morabito.
Here.
Here, Councilor Novoselfsky.
Here.
Here, Councilor Patch is absent, Councilor Penta.
Here.
Here, Councilor Powers.
Here.
Here, Councilor Riordan.
Here.
Here, and Council President Zambudo.
Here.
Here, a quorum is present. Approval of the Journal of the Meeting of March 10, 2014.
All in favor, all opposed? So, over here. Council Riordan.
Thank you, Council President Zambudo. I seem to be a little lower than I was here last week, somehow. I would like to offer at this point a moment of silence. Yesterday, rather, we lost a very well-known, important, and hard-working member of our community, George Kingston, who also happens to be my uncle, passed away suddenly in the hospital yesterday. George was president, was a teacher in the school system for many, many years, and he retired as principal of the Lincoln School, of which he was principal for many, many years. He was a well-known member of the community, always participated, he was also a prominent member of the Knights of Columbus here in our city, and I would offer a moment of silence to him.
Thank you, Mr. President.
At this time, I'm going to call on the Chairman of the Appointments Committee, Art Guanasso.
Thank you, Mr. President. Suspend rules?
All in favor, all opposed?
Thank you, Mr. President. I almost said all in favor, all opposed. That's your job. Thank you for the latitude of taking these particular names before us that I will read ahead of schedule based on the fact that they need to get and do certain projects that are ongoing within our community, and the licensed drain layers terminate on April 1st of every year. So, I'll read them as follows, and if there's no objections for the City Council, we can take them all up as one vote. The first is relative to the appointment of Rafael Construction as a licensed drain layer. Is Rafael a member? Okay, you can just stand up. Thank you. Communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of BF Construction, Inc., is drain layer. Thank you, sir. Communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Lamont Brothers. Thank you. Communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of A. Sasso &amp; Sons. Thank you, sir. Communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of AL Prime, M.G. Consultant. Thank you. I got a call earlier this evening from Marquesian Sun, and they asked that he was out of the state at the particular time, and I said it was okay because it was renewal. Communication from the appointment of Mercurio Brothers Landscaping. Thank you, sir. And the communication from the appointment of Arm Construction, licensed drain layer. Arm Construction, are you here? We will hold Arm. And we have communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Caruso Corporation. Hi, Steve. Communication from RC&amp;D, Inc., licensed drain layer. We will hold that one. I ask that the City Council vote favorably on those petitions.
Council Janino.
Are these all reappointments?
Yes. I just took up the licensed drain layers. I didn't take up the constable, no. These are all licensed drain layers.
Mr. Chairman, I believe we have one late appointment.
And that's, that's who?
[inaudible 00:00:51].
Is that working?
Are you here?
I'm here.
Okay. I would have been surprised if you said, "I'm not here." I would have been taken back a bit. So, I ask that the City Council vote favorably for all the attendees. Thank you.
Okay, on the, on the appointments, roll call.
Councilor Rigo.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Gino.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselfsky.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Patch is absent, Councilor Penta.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Riordan.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, the drain layers have been confirmed.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, at this time, while we're under suspension, I'm going to call on our esteemed mayor, Dan Rizzo.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. President. I wanted just to say a couple of brief words. I'm assuming, are we on calendar item number one? Is that what we're discussing? Because I came up here for calendar item number one and calendar item number eight, so whichever you want to pick.
We're up here for all of your, whatever you're up here for.
Okay.
So, your first calendar item's number one, let's go with it.
Okay. I see down here below, they're all set up for the presentation, so I'll just be very, very brief. I know that this project on Winthrop Ave has been extremely painful for a lot of people, not the least of which live down in the area of the Immaculate Conception and certainly along Winthrop Avenue. It's been a little bit longer than we had anticipated. We originally thought we could get it done by the end of December. Unfortunately, because of the magnitude of the project, it just was not feasible. There was a lot of permitting that went along with that, a lot of separate jurisdictions. It wasn't just the City of Revere, but it was Verizon, it was the MWRA, it was National Grid. So, you know, we had a lot of different logistics to deal with, and not the least of which was having to go down 30 feet into the ground to get to this particular area of sewer pipes. So, it's been, it's been, you know, a little bit longer than, than we could have anticipated. I want to extend my apologies to the residents of that area and really to the City Council. It was never our intention to, you know, to mislead anybody with respect to time. It's just that once you start to get into the ground, get into the permitting process, it's just, it's just, you know, the nature of what this particular problem was. So, rather than talk any more about that, I know that the Council has on its agenda this calendar number one where Bob Button will explain it in much better detail than I can, but again, my apologies certainly to the residents of that area. We're going to try and be completed, I think, by the end of March, I think, or, well, am I correct? By the end of March, early April, so people can get back on with their lives. So, I appreciate it.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, and, you know, we, those of us who have been, have done some road construction and know a little bit about the logistics of going down in the trench 30 feet, I never expected this to be an easy project, and then when you add these high-pressure water lines on top of our sewer line, it's just an astronomical feat, and that's one of the reasons I wanted Bob Button up here to explain to people what exactly has happened there and how, what a monumental task this really was, and it's coming to an end, thank God, but it's not because we didn't want it to end quicker, but it was impossible. Mr. Button.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for having me here. If you could just bear with me a quick second. We did throw together a PowerPoint presentation so that folks at home could see some of the pictures from construction. I did give everybody a paper copy of the same presentation, and knowing that you've had a long evening, I'll try to go through it very, very quickly, but I did want to make sure that we explained some of the complexity, as the mayor had indicated, in terms of the amount of work that was necessary to make this project happen. I do have my colleague John Doherty with me this evening, and I did want to thank my staff, Mike Judasey, Steve Callahan, and Tom Casey, who have been working tirelessly since this problem started to try to come up with the most cost-effective solution and then implement it as quickly as we possibly can. I know it seems like a long time, but under a normal circumstance, to fix a problem like this, it could take up to two years to plan and execute the type of work that we did in just a few months' time. So, what I'd like to do real quickly is just sort of explain to people what the collapse was all about, the sewer bypass pumping that we did, some of the evaluation of different options to solve the problem that we looked at, and we tried to look at options that would solve the immediate problem as well as work for the city in the long term over the course of the consent decree. Things like upsizing pipe and that were all considered to make sure we came up with the best solution, not just the fastest. As the mayor had indicated, there's a, there's an alphabet soup of state agencies in addition to numerous departments within the city and you folks that we had to work with to make this all happen. The city was very fortunate that the Mass DEP provided the emergency funding, the $2 million that this body authorized last fall to help the city and help us pay for that. And then, lastly, just go through some of the construction that we've gone through and a little bit of the work that we have to do in the next couple of weeks. The collapse itself, as many know, was in Winthrop Ave. It's about 162 feet of pipe that collapsed right by Home Plate on the Little League Field. As you'll see in the next photo, the photo on the left with, shows the piece of clay pipe is actually the collapse that occurred, the clay pipe that failed beneath the water pipe. And then, in addition to that, the photo on the right is actually of a 2x4 that we found just upstream that had gotten lodged and jammed in the pipe that was creating operational problems for DPW. So, not only did we fix the collapse, but we also fixed that problem while we were there. This right here, trying to explain to people why it was so complicated and what we were trying to do, here's a cross-section of Winthrop Ave, standing basically at Home Plate, looking towards the Revere Beach Parkway. And what you can see going from the left-hand side of the street to the right where the purple people are, is you can see the local sewers, the Verizon Duck Banks, the City of Revere Water Main, the National Grid Gas Main, the Verizon Duck Banks, 24-inch water, 16-inch water, and additional electric duck banks in the sidewalks. So, there was basically from one sidewalk to the other, a series of utilities, very large and complicated and interwoven utilities that were on top of this particular sewer. There was actually four pipes that needed to be fixed in order to make this happen. The gas main was 110 years old, roughly, cast-iron gas mains, so that was completely replaced from the Parkway to Victoria, I believe, or just a little bit past Victoria Street. So, we needed to make it safe to work out there before anybody could start digging and vibrating and doing the work that was done. That was the very first thing that we did. Then, we went through a series of options, and we had to work with the MWRA water mains that I'll describe in a minute, and we worked with them quite effectively. And then, lastly, as you'll see in some of the photos, we actually got down and did the sewer work. One of the first things that was done immediately when the collapse occurred is in front of the baseball field and in front of a couple of the homes, we had to set up emergency sewer piping, bypass piping. Those orange pumps that you saw in the street and that you see in this next photo here initially were set up by the city using the city's pumps to pump the sewage around this collapsed section of pipe, and we quickly realized that the repair was going to take a bit and that the city needed these pumps for other activities. So, what we did is we mobilized a rental pump and piping system that was installed by the contractor and then operated and maintained by the DPW staff. And I know you folks got a fair amount of questions about the DPW workers that were out there, but one of the things that we did is the workers were able to do the work instead of hiring a private contractor and paying them to do it. So, it was actually an opportunity to get the city's DPW folks to help maintain and be a part of the solution, and that's what they did. We set up a force account so that those costs can be documented to the Mass DEP, and our intention is to recover those costs for the overtime and whatnot that was done with the DPW workers in addition to the police details that were necessary out there. There was an initial public safety effort associated with finding out what the problem was and getting all the temporary systems in place, and then we've worked quite extensively with the police department during construction to make it as minimally disruptive as we could. So, I know that's been a question as well. One of the things that's important to note, and I think I shared this with you in past meetings, this particular section of Winthrop Ave handles about 10% of the overall sewage in the entire city. So, there's a very, very large area of pipe indicated in that highlighted area in blue on the GIS map that was impacted by this collapse. So, we wanted to make sure that we evaluated the alternatives that would allow us to not only fix the problem but continue to serve and hopefully upgrade the service to that, that area. So, we looked at cured-in-place pipelining, which is the CIPPL acronym. We looked at a spot repair, which we ultimately selected. We looked at completely removing the pipe and replacing it in another location and/or replacing it with a larger pipe in another location. We looked at moving the pipe to different areas. We looked at pipe jacking as a way to not disrupt the street and traffic, try to work below grade. We looked at pipe bursting, where we would actually pull a pipe through a pipe as a way to try to not have minimal impact on the neighborhood. We looked at running down Victoria Road and around as an option. We looked at all of the traffic concerns and mitigation, and then, like I said, the consistency with the city's long-term goals, and we think we came up with the best option to fix the problem as quickly as we can and provide the city with a long-term benefit. Here's just an idea of some of the different agencies that we worked with. Mass DEP for the funding, Division of Capital Asset Management, we had to do an emergency waiver request for them. They worked with us. Obviously, the authority worked extensively with us, and I'd like to publicly thank them for the help that they provided in terms of the coordination of different alternatives and then ultimately helping us to move those very, very large water transmission mains out of the way so that we could affect the sewer quickly. Mastioti, in terms of traffic coordination and diversions, there was work on the Callahan Tunnel and all these other things that were going on that they were very concerned about. DCR, the MBTA for the bus lines, and then working with National Grid again on that large and old gas main. The state, as I had said earlier, provided $2 million in emergency funding as a special set aside for the City of Revere. The Council approved that funding, I believe, last September, and the construction contract was executed with Albany's DNS, which was a tremendous firm to work with. They helped us in the planning and evaluation of alternatives as well as executing the work, and I've heard very good things in terms of their, their approach to the project out in the field and trying to work with neighbors. It's a very complicated construction project, and we had a couple of challenging moments, but my understanding is they did a very good job to work with everyone out there. In October, we held a public meeting here in this chamber. Councilor Penta, the mayor, others were here for that particular meeting, had quite a bit of interest from folks in the audience, and we tried to explain to them what the plans were and our approach to getting this solved. As the mayor indicated, it was probably between four and eight weeks longer than we originally had hoped in terms of coming up with a solution, but there were many, many reasons that drove that particular issue. Here's a picture. Mayor Rizzo was out to the site during the sewer construction work just a few weeks ago, and we were showing the mayor and explaining to him the magnitude of work that had to be done and just how deep the pipe was, and you'll see a couple of photos about that in a second, and just running through the two, the gas and the sewer work that we did up front. One of the things that we did in lining the pipe is we were worried that there would be additional collapses to the sewer. So, after we got the gas main stabilized, we went in and lined several hundred feet of pipe with a cured-in-place lining like we've done in other areas of the city so that when we started to excavate and do the work, we wouldn't end up with more collapses that would cost more to fix. So, we were trying to stabilize things. The MWRA water mains, I can't say enough about how important it was to work with the authority to move those pipes out of the way. I know you had heard previously about the sewer being located under, under the water mains, and as you saw that cross-section across the street, I mean, one of the reasons that they are where they are is because there's very few, if any, other places for them to go. These water mains are regional in nature, they feed up on the North Shore as well as your neighbors in Winthrop and East Boston, so it was not an easy situation to work around them. The sewer work obviously took, took place, and now what you'll see the folks are doing this week and next is actually putting back the two pipes, the two water mains that were done. All the sewer work was finished last Friday, I believe, and there was a story in the paper about it this week. It takes about a week to eight days for each water main because in addition to doing the installation, they have to chlorinate the pipes and make sure that they're safe for people to drink and utilize the water. So, there's some testing and other things that'll be going on even if they're not physically digging in the street. This will give you an idea of the sewer lining process, again, on the upstream and downstream sections. About 650 feet of pipe were lined. There is some additional work in the manholes. Some of the manholes were very deteriorated, we found during construction, so we'll be lining the manholes, and there's a short section out in Revere Beach Parkway that we'll be working on over the next several weeks, but that is usually just a day or two at a time, and it's not a long-term disruption. Here, you can see a couple of photos of the liner. The cured-in-place liner is, they call it a sock, it's much like an athletic sock, and they basically pull it into the pipe and impregnate it with resin and then heat it up and cook it in the pipe, and effectively what it does is it creates a brand-new pipe in a pipe. The lower photo in the center is actually a section of the pipe that had been lined. We inspected it afterwards to make sure it was done properly, and that will help with the structural integrity. What it'll also do, as we've been doing in many other areas around the city, is help with infiltration and inflow. There were many sections of this pipe upstream and downstream of the collapse where the pipe was cracked and very deteriorated and groundwater was leaking into the system. So, we'll be fixing that problem as well as fixing the collapse itself. Here is just a couple of shots of the temporary 16-inch water main. On the left-hand side, you'll see the big water pipe down in the ground. It comes up out of the ground and ran on the sidewalk. One of the things that we had to do is we had to shut down the 16-inch pipe, move it up onto the sidewalk, insulate it in those blankets so it didn't freeze during the winter, chlorinate it, test it, get it out of the way, then go back and work with MWRA to shut down the 24 because they couldn't take both of them out at the same time, and then the 24 was shut down and cut out of the way, and both of those pipes, as I said earlier, will be replaced over the next couple of weeks. Here's, here's a shot, and you can see in the photo on the right, I think this is the very first manhole that they started in. You can get a sense of how deep the excavation is when you look at the manhole on the backside of the picture, the trench shoring systems, and then just look at some of the men that are in these pictures to get an idea of scale. It was very, very complicated. The other picture with the excavator, the big orange excavator is a very specialized piece of equipment with a very large bucket. You can see it's almost effectively as big as the man standing next to it. We needed to mobilize very specialized equipment to get down the 25 to 30 feet that we needed to, and in this case, you can see they're also stabilizing the telephone poles. In addition to what was in the ground, we had to make sure the telephone poles didn't fall over on us while we were working there. So, it was very, very, very complicated. We were able to work through the weather. God knows it snowed just about every Tuesday, I think, this winter, and Albany's was able to work through that. You can see that, and then you can see there's a picture of, this is actually where the collapse was, and you can see the men down trying to stabilize the sewer. Again, a couple of more shots of the sewer going in. I believe the photo on the left is actually the last piece of sewer that was put in, like I said, just a couple of Fridays ago. Couple of more shots just to give people an idea of the magnitude of what we were trying to do there, the excavators and the manpower down in the trench. As I said, right now, we're in the process of putting the 16-inch, I'm sorry, the 24-inch pipe back together, the 16-inch pipe will follow, and hopefully by the end of March, all the water main work will be done, and then the first week in April, we'll be doing site restoration, fixing the sidewalk, doing some temporary paving, that type of thing, so that we can get out of the way before the Little League season starts for the year. That's been a key goal for us. So, that's where we are right now in terms of remaining work, getting the manhole and the rehab stuff done. We'll do some temporary paving and restoration, allow the ground to settle, and do some permanent paving, probably later in the fall or maybe even early next spring, and we'll be done with the emergency repairs by April 9. The one thing I wanted to mention to you all and to folks watching on television is that there is additional work on the upstream sections of Winthrop Ave that we will be doing this summer to stabilize additional areas to prevent, to prevent collapses so we don't have to do a similar repair in the future. We'll be lining and doing other things. So, if folks see construction out there happening, that's part of the plan. And at that point, I covered a lot of information. I'd be very happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Council Haas.
Mr. President, as far as the temporary fill you indicated, when they're going to start the paving there?
What they'll do, Councilor, is they've done all the backfill for the sewer pipe, and then as they finish each individual water main, they'll do the backfill and compaction, and then when both water mains are done, we'll do a temporary paving, you know, temporary slash permanent paving.
Right.
And that'll likely be probably the first week in April, again, so that we're cleaned up ahead of the.
Will that also include sidewalks? Did you affect it?
Yes.
Not patching, but do it all over completely?
We'll have to reset some of the granite curbs, and then there are some segments and some panels of sidewalk along the edge that'll be completely replaced.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Council Riordan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bob, the most obvious question to me is how did a 2x4 get into the sewer system?
It's, I wouldn't want to tell you some of the things that we've seen in the sewers, but there's sort of two thoughts on that. Either it was, you know, somehow worked its way in upstream and got wedged and caught in that location, or there had been some previous repairs done out there seven to 10 years ago. It may have been something that was left in by the prior contractors. We're not 100% certain, but we do know that the DPW superintendent has had some operational problems with things getting blocked behind that. So, getting it out of the way, and honestly, one of the things we were concerned about is when we cut it out, was there going to be another collapse? So, we were actually very, very sensitive to how we took that out of there so that we didn't create a further problem.
Thank you. Council Penta.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bob, I understand that this job was astronomical and probably more than yourself and engineers, basically, when they, I'll get right to the point. Basically, we were in this room with 40 or 50 residents, and back then, this, we funded this in September. October 19th, we were in this room, and you basically said that you're looking to try to get this done by Thanksgiving. We're four months into this. I understand what had to be done, had to be done, but I was just surprised that it was that far off, the calculations were that far off. That's pretty far off. And I know you said it was two months just getting all the entities together, you know, the TE and MWRA and everybody else, but I thought that was something that we already had a, a figure to have a handle on. But people were, I was getting calls, what was taking so long and everything else, and I understand that you run into problems when you start getting in there. The real question I got is this, and it's a follow-up question after this I want to ask you. This consent audit that we're in, and I don't suppose it went from a $50 million to $100 million, but we'll stick with the $50 million I first heard when Mayor Mercino was in. We inherited this as a council, I know Mayor Rizzo inherited this from a court of, from a federal judge. These numbers, were they not done by your company? And, I mean, in other words, what work had to be done anticipated four years ago when you came into the city?
Yep.
Why wasn't this seen then?
Well, the collapse is something that unfortunately with clay pipes that were installed, you know, 80 to 100 years ago throughout the city, there are collapses that could occur at any point in time. So, you know, some, some of this stuff is just the nature of the age of the system and that type of thing. With respect to the costs, particularly for Winthrop Ave, when we came to the Council in September, when we went to DEP, we had asked for about $2 million in funding for the project. In the end of the day, we figure that the work right now will come in somewhere around $1.75 to $1.8 million. So, in terms of overall cost versus what we really inspected, expected, the total cost of the project, we feel we're coming in, you know, 10 to 12% under the budget. So, with respect to Winthrop Ave, one of the things that was difficult is there were seven or eight options that ranged from, you know, the, the project that we did all the way up to several million dollars, and one of the things that we were looking at was upsizing the pipe, for example, if you had done that. In order to carry it all the way up Winthrop Ave to Broadway and Park Street where you'd need to to benefit from it would be millions and millions of additional dollars in costs. So, one of the reasons that we took the time to look for the most effective solution was not just the quickest, shortest term, but the overall longest investment.
Well, I'm glad you brought that up because, you know, you see something in a local newspaper and you hear things that, because I was in several of those meetings when the money was discussed on how much it would cost for details, how much it would cost for DPW workers. And to me, yes, the money, you saved more money than you thought anticipated cost, but there's also a shift of money that went a lot more for the overtime for those employees and less for probably Plan A or B, I don't know. But there was a shift in that money because it was a lot less money anticipated for the overtime. It came in under, and you paid more money in overtime, so there had to be some kind of shift there of how the work was done. So, I mean, you basically touched on that. My other, my second question is this, and I'm sure you have it, and I like to see it, is across this whole city, you have a design of what's needed, we got We got sub pumps illegally in houses. We funded it up here. We spoke about it several, a couple of years ago. And I hear people that near the ocean sides, ocean fronts, the pipes are not lined yet. Do we have a, I'm sure you have a list of everything that has to be done.
Yes, sir.
An engineering standpoint. Do we have, what's priority, number one, number two, number three? Because I might hear some stories of, when I hear ocean water getting into a sewer line, that's money we're all paying in this room unnecessarily. To me, that should be probably priority number one, or even the sub pumps that are pumping into illegal, which we stepped up to the plate this council and said, we'll pay for it as long as you're honest and come to us and the pipe is in there.
Absolutely.
Now, I don't know, I mean, if your company, how big you are or anything else, or how you can handle this, but there are some stuff that I think that, to me, I can't see much being higher priority than some of these issues that are costing us astronomical money. If we fix those things, we could pay with some of this, the money was saved. So if you can just answer that question, because, I mean, you're the ones that have all this stuff in line. But I hear stories from different things that are affecting people's homes and stuff, and that shouldn't be if all these problems are corrected. Could you just?
I absolutely could speak to that.
Thank you.
One of the things that we did is just this past December, we submitted a report, a comprehensive wastewater and stormwater management plan to the EPA and Mass DEP. And that was a requirement of your consent decree. And that plan lays out everything in a prioritized order for the work that needs to be done for the balance of the consent decree. So there is, you know, the list that you were talking about of fixing the problems worst in a sort of worst-case basis. What we've been doing since we started the project in the city, helping you with a consent decree, is in fact doing that. And as tough as it is to find that catch basin here or there that maybe gets ocean water into the system, the four or five years of work that we've done already has already been to fix problems that were higher on the priority list than something like this catch basin and the water that's coming in for the beach. There are a series of problems throughout the city that have been addressed, and we've tried to pick off the worst of the worst through this process. We've now lined 20% of the city with that cured and placed liner. So one in five feet of pipe throughout the city has now been lined. And the way that pipe was selected was based on the leakiest, worst pipes first. So we very much have been working with the engineering and the public works and others to, in a thoughtful way, sort of prioritize areas of the city that are worst and work on those areas first. And the consent decree document that we submitted to EPA actually lays that out so that over the next several years, you'll continue to tackle the worst of the worst problems until we get to a point where we've stabilized the sewer and the drainage systems. I think on the sewer side of things, you know, we'll get there in the three-to-five-year horizon. I think the drainage system is going to be one of the more challenging because one of the issues with the sump pumps is in order to have a sump pump pump out of someone's house and have somewhere to go, there are many areas of the city that don't have drainage systems or have failing tide gates and those types of things. So the investment is in giving the water somewhere to go other than your sewer system, and those will be some of the longer-term challenges in the consent decree. We have had about 100 people come in through the amnesty program to the city engineer's office, and we'll be moving forward with sump pump removals this year. I would encourage anybody who's listening to participate in this amnesty program because I think it's important for them, and it's important for the city to get that extraneous water out, as you'd said.
I just have one other question, just to be quick.
Go ahead.
You know, going over last year's budget and the budget before, I'm looking basically at the water rates for the taxpayers, and the mayor and the city council inherited all this, unfortunately, just keep going up. We're trying to do the best we can to get a handle on it instead of forcing people out of here. But my question is, we have a DPW. We got a truck that's supposed to be here in December, it should be here any month. It's a camera truck. We spent, on average, almost $700,000 a year on outside companies to do that. We're getting a camera truck, which I know the mayor, you know, has put in for it through the consent order, being paid from that. And, you know, that's something that our city could take over. Would that money being saved, with city employees doing it with the camera truck, would that go towards a consent order to the top, bottom line of this money?
Absolutely, Counselor. And I think one of the things that you have to recognize through the consent order is it's not only the capital improvements that are necessary to fix problems and broken pipes in the system, but it's also the operation and maintenance things that are necessary. So this piece of equipment, along with some other things that we're working with the DPW through their CMOM program, will actually help the city operate and manage the system, maintain the system moving forward. The work with being able to do some of the TV inspections for the lining projects may be too much for the DPW to keep up with initially, but certainly they'll have the equipment to work on problems, you know, blockages and things that you guys regularly call complaints from your constituents. They'll now have the tools necessary to work on that.
I don't want to take much of the council's time. And in their future, I'd appreciate if you could come to a ways and means meeting and maybe get all this stuff out on the table of what money's going to cost, what money we could save in-house and whatnot. I'd appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
If I could just clarify something, because I know maybe many of the counselors might have the same questions. When Counselor Penta had originally said it started off at $50 million, it went to $100 million. And so I just wanted to clarify that a little bit. Number one, obviously, as time ticks on, you know, something like, for example, our school building program started off in 2001 as a certain number. And then naturally, over time, because of, you know, labor costs and materials, things like that, it escalates. But it really, there's not a dollar number that's associated with this consent decree. It's a consent decree that dictates how much work the city has to do. So it's really not a dollar amount. I think maybe back at that time, there were some estimates floating around, but there's really, as time goes along and you realize what work has to be done, that number, you know, can fluctuate. Now, that being said, we have, are in the process of preparing to go back in with the EPA and the DEP and the DOJ to try and amend this consent decree. CDM Smith has been doing a terrific job in preparing materials that, I think is about this thick, that we've kind of put together with our litigation attorney that we've retained in conjunction with CDM Smith, to go back in and not try to be relieved from doing the work. Because the work has to be done to stabilize our sewer and drainage and, you know, systems. But to get more time, I mean, to have 10 years to fix 100 years' worth of problems is just not realistic. And it's been my, really as a counselor, it was my contention that it was unfair to have 10 years to fix 100 years' worth of problems. And I think that Bob and John and certainly our attorney that we retained to help represent the city feels as though it was a very, very, very draconian decree that was bestowed upon the city, and we're trying to work our way out of that and get more time. Because obviously, the more that we have to get done in a short period of time, the more it costs and the more we have to pass that on to the ratepayers. And, you know, none of us want to see the ratepayers continue, you know, continue to see water and sewer rates go in the direction that they're going. So, you know, we're doing all that we can to try to control these costs, but, you know, within the confines of what we have to deal with right now. So I just wanted to clarify that, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Regal.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of quick questions. One, on the budget, you said one, you know, the projected cost would be about 1.7 to 8, 1.8. Is that, does that, I'm assuming it includes details and all the overtime and all that?
Yes, it does.
What's the, do you have a general breakout of how much, you know, details cost first overtime versus the actual, like, some of the actual work?
Yeah, if I remember correctly, we had budgeted about $350,000 for police details and roughly the same amount for DPW. And my understanding is those should come in in about the $250,000 to $275,000 range each. So although they were out there for a slightly longer period of time, both the DPW and police are coming in under our original estimates.
Okay, and then, obviously, the consent decree is kind of an albatross. But is there any, are there any issues that we may not know about? And I guess it's unknowns, and, you know, I don't want to put you on the spot in terms of that, but are there issues that may not be, you know, may not have been outlined in the consent decree that we might have in the future? Are there places where we might be looking at unforeseen repair that, you know, is going to cost a little bit more than we, than maybe we're thinking about? I guess, I'm asking if there's any, you know, what work have we done to see if there's anything that maybe come up that we didn't know about, that wasn't on our radar initially?
Sure. Generally speaking, under the consent decree, there are four main areas of work. There's the pipelining and the rehab work that we've been doing. There's the pump stations, of which you've got 20-odd or 30-odd pump stations in the city between sewer and stormwater. There's capacity work in terms of making some of the sewer pipes larger, and then there's stormwater work. And with respect to the pump stations, the city's made great progress in rehabilitating and replacing those, and we're continuing to do more every year. In terms of the pipe lining, we've lined, as I said a few minutes ago, about 20% of the city's pipes, and that's 108 or 110 miles. So we've lined over 20 miles of pipe in the city in the last few years. So those two are pretty well under control. On the capacity side of things, there are a multitude of factors that go into that, both within the city and regionally. So the capacity is one that, as the mayor had said, we're working with EPA and others on some additional time to come up with the best and most cost-effective solution. And I think the one for me that has the probably greatest potential for unknowns is with respect to the stormwater system because there are so many areas, as you get up on, you know, North Shore Road where there's no stormwater at all in the street, just as an example. And then there are others where Harris Street Tide Gate, for example, where the tide gate's deteriorating, and maybe you need a stormwater pump station behind it in order to, when you have a high tide and a tremendous amount of rain, have it effectively keep stormwater out of people's homes so that they can then connect their sump pumps into something and not feel like the sump pump is their only solution being connected to the sewer. So that's the area where there's the greatest potential for growth. But I think one of the things we're trying, I know one of the things we're trying to do is fix all of the sewer work or most of it up front so that we can maximize that benefit in that water that's going through the meter up front and measure that and do it in conjunction with smart stormwater work. So that's where I see the potential problem in the future.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bob, I have two questions for you. With regard, excuse me, with regard to the stormwater, are there provisions there that would require the installation of additional catch basins where necessary, such as areas like Bay Road, Shawmaut Street, Sears Street, that area there down off Revere Street?
We, in the consent decree itself, we weren't naming specific streets for stormwater improvements, but overall, yes, there's a definite provision to add catch basins, piping, that type of thing, in areas where they're needed.
And part of that question, too, is, I'm sure you are familiar with the Eastern County Ditch.
Yes.
Runs from Wonderland down under North Shore Road, the head wall out down along, goes by Sears Street, Shawmaut Street, all those streets down there.
Very familiar with it, yes.
Is there any part of that consent decree that is going to require us to clean the, those culverts of the phlegmities? And I was down there just Saturday. And, I mean, I can show, I could take you down there and show you, there's tires, there's wood pallets, there's all kinds of debris in there. And I'm certainly, I'm certain, when that phlegmities dies off, it remains there, and I understand we can't sidecast it anymore, it just stays there. And at some point, if not already, that's going to seriously impede the flow of water out to that tide gate out of the B&amp;M tracks. So is there any provision to clean that area of the Eastern County Ditch?
Yes, Counselor, the broad answer is yes. There's a couple of little pieces to that. First of all, we've been working with the DPW director, the city auditor, the purchasing agent on developing a contract to dispose of those materials once they're cleaned out. And we should, that should go out in the next few weeks. One of the things with sidecasting, as you talked about, if you just move it up to the banks, then over a couple of years' time, it just comes right back.
It's back in there, that's correct.
And one of the things that we're trying to do is work with DPW so there's a mechanism to get it out of there once and for all and not have it continue to wash back in and have to be moved. That being said, one of the things we're also doing in addition to working with the EPA and Mass DEP on extension of time is to try to work with the multitude of state agencies that have assets in the city of Revere so that they can step up to the plate and help the city with things like maintaining their infrastructure and their assets. There are areas of the city where drainage will flow into Mass DOT structures or DCR structures, and the catch basins are full and the pipes are overgrown, or in the cases of the ditch, you know, there's state land that has sediment from years, if not decades' worth of maybe a deferred or lack of maintenance that we're trying to address. And so the city of Revere doesn't have to shoulder this problem all on its own. We're working with the mayor's office to have these state agencies come in and help us with these problems as well.
I have one more question regarding the Winthrop Ave. project. I know you, I think you've indicated you're replacing 250 millennial feet of 16-inch water main and 250 of 24-inch water main, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Now, as we all know, there are fire hydrants along that area that those mains feed into. Are we making, are we making provisions to replace any pipes that may have been deteriorated that go into those fire hydrants? And if necessary, are we looking to add any fire hydrants in the interest of public safety along those thoroughfares?
Sure. I was just, as you were speaking, Counsel, looking for this image right here. If you can look, I'm not sure if it's behind me, but the cross-section that I showed earlier in the presentation from Winthrop Ave., the two pipes, the 16 and the 24-inch pipe that we are replacing or relocating are MWRA transmission mains, and there are not any city hydrants directly connected to those mains. What happens is those are very large pipes that deliver water to certain locations in the city, and then the city system takes over from there. So if you look on that, there's a 10-inch city water main that actually we did not touch as part of this work. There are actually three water pipes in that street. So that would be where any hydrants would be connected. One of the things we can do is we can take a look at the spacing and maybe the age of some of the hydrants so that if we're out there and we're going to repave the street, you know, permanent paving later in the year, maybe DPW could take a look at doing a hydrant replacement or two.
That's my point, because if this other pipe that's 100 years old is deteriorated, I'm sure some of those pipes may have been deteriorated too, even though they might not even be 100 years old, but close to it.
We'll work with the city engineer and the DPW folks to evaluate that.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Counselor Nowitzki.
Thank you, Mr. President. Hi, Bob, thank you very much. Very interesting, very informative, thank you. One issue on Winthrop Ave., I know it's not my dish, you know, my ward, but I know a lot of people in the area, and they're always asking me questions. When this whole thing is finished.
Yep.
Is that section of Winthrop Ave. going to get entirely repaved?
We're, right now, what we're looking at is paving the half of the street that has the trenches underneath that and letting it settle for a period of time. Because typically, what happens is you like to try to let that stuff sit for a few weeks or months so that you don't end up with settling after the permanent paving. So my expectation is there'll be a permanent paving program that's done out there. But what we'll do for this summer season is just a temporary paving, which will hopefully not present any problems for people traveling through that area.
Good, thank you. Now, coming down to my neighborhood, you mentioned about catch basins in areas. Are you looking at the top of the hill, the wall of the dead ends, Waller Ave., Florence Ave., Arlington, that don't have any catch basins and the water is going over the cliff? We had a water break there the other night at 4:00 in the morning.
I saw it.
And the poor gentleman's deck down below got destroyed by the mud coming over the cliff. And I would think that, you know, that's one area that we should have a catch basin to alleviate that part.
Just quickly, in response to that, there are a number of areas like that throughout the city. And again, to the counselor's point earlier, in terms of the biggest costs and unknown with respect to stormwater, it's probably that one particular issue of adding, because it's not just the basin, but it's all the pipe to get to the basin. And then it's where does that go and where is it connected? So the quick answer is we are absolutely looking for areas like that throughout the city. Because if there isn't drainage, nine times out of 10, that water ends up in the sewer system, and that's what got us into this problem in the first place.
Well, I know we're replacing the pipe up there, the water pipe. And we literally have to go down the hill to connect down on the bottom on the Revere Beach Parkway. And I'm wondering, maybe that's something we can coordinate. If we're digging now, why not look at that?
Makes sense to do it all at once. We can talk to DPW and engineering about that.
And lastly, Cool. And lastly, um, I want to talk about the county ditch down behind Garfield School and behind Shaw's Market.
Okay.
We know there's no flow down there at all. What's the look see at that?
Yeah, again, um, it's, it's trying to get some of the state agencies to help step up and, and do that. We were doing some work with DCR, as an example, to do some drainage work, and they had asked us to go clean a whole bunch of their pipes in order to connect in, and we said, the city engineer quite rightfully said, "We'll go do that as soon as you do the list of things that we need done in the city." So Nick is definitely fighting to help you in, in that sense. So I think it'll be a collective effort to try to get some of these done. Those ditches are so critical to the drainage that we're trying to focus on them, but we're also trying to do it and not spend the city's money if, if in fact the state agency can do it.
Cool, thank you very much, Mr. President. All right, uh, I'm not going to add to, uh, any of this, since everybody's asked every question that possibly could be asked. I do appreciate the work that you people have done out there in, in looking out for the city's interest. I do understand the magnitude of this project, and I, aside from the low estimate of the timeframe that it was going to take to do it, I'm grateful that we haven't run into any real disasters out there, those high transmission lines and stuff like that. There were potential minefields out there that-
The gas mains.
The gas mains, that people don't even realize how risky some of this stuff is. But anyways, I thank you for the presentation. I think you educated all of us and the public on what's going on out there, and I think people have a, a better appreciation of just how big a project this was, and the, the good news is, it's coming to an end.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, at this point, we're going to, as soon as, uh, we get Bob out of here, we're going to let the mayor, uh, come up and finish his, uh, communications, and then we'll move on to the meeting. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, members of the council. I just wanted to come up, uh, you'll know, you'll notice that, um, uh, well, actually, I believe it's calendar item number eight, we were able to certify our free cash. I know when I came up here, uh, a couple of weeks ago, we hadn't been able to certify our free cash at that point, but I wanted to come up to let you formally know that the D O R did certify almost three, well, $3.3 million, uh, which I think is great news. Uh, you know, you add that into, um, our, uh, our, uh, bond level, um, uh, increase that we took, and, uh, it paints a good picture for the city right now. So, uh, things are good. Of this $3.3 million by ordinance, I think you know that 15% of that automatically goes into stabilization, so that, uh, puts another $480,000 into our stabilization account, and brings that account up to now, I believe, around $3.2 million in that ballpark. So, uh, very, very healthy. Um, and, uh, uh, you know, we, we will, uh, continue to monitor, um, you know, some potential uses, uh, for this free cash. Typically, they are on, uh, one-time expenses, but as you know, we can use them for, you know, however we see fit as a community. So, uh, for now, I don't need to park the money anywhere, I'm just going to leave it here. We'll have more of a, we'll have more of a, um, a sense as we go forward in the budget process, see where we're at, but, uh, I just wanted to, um, you know, uh, thank you for your cooperation once again, in helping the city, uh, continue to pave the way toward a stabilized financial picture. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, thank you for the good news, and we'll, we'll hear from our, uh, Director of Finance, I think.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I'd like to call up our Director of Finance, but, um, you know, but before I ask him just to say a couple of words, I just want to really extend my thanks, uh, to our Director of Finance, George Anzoni, and to our City Auditor, Laurie Giudella, really the whole finance team. They, they, uh, you know, they go about their job each and every day without a lot of fanfare, but, uh, but they do a terrific job, and obviously, they're very well respected by the rating agencies who take a look at cities and towns and municipalities. Um, and, uh, and, uh, while other municipalities have seen a reduction in their bond rating, our bond rating is going up, and we're certifying the highest amount of free cash I think that the city's ever, uh, been able to certify. So, uh, that's a real credit. It's a credit to your fiscal oversight as a body, as a city council, and it certainly is a credit, uh, to our finance team. So, I want to thank you for that.
Mr. Director.
Yes, uh, on this, I'd like to mention a couple of things. One is, if you look at the 15% that has to go in every year according to city ordinance, uh, in the last two years, uh, somewhere about $900,000 has increased the, uh, just by ordinance, has increased the, uh, stabilization fund, uh, which is very important. The other part of it too is that I, I, you noticed a number of the areas which are written in the, uh, communication to you, uh, that, uh, we have been very successful in, uh, looking at the calculations and try to remedy, remedy any weaknesses that, uh, there are in the calculations that would lower our free cash. So we're looking at that, um, and we're continuously going over that. And again, if you look at the $2.8 million you got this year, and the closer, uh, well, the $3.2 million that we, excuse me, $2.8 from last year and the $3.2 million from, uh, this year, we're up, and over those years, we got about $6 million in free cash. So that's a record. I mean, I've been here 36 years, and that really is a record. And again, it, it, a number of people have to take credit for this. One is the administration. Uh, I thank my finance team for the great work they do, uh, the city council for the cooperation and the foresight, uh, they have when they, and fiscal responsibility they've shown, uh, throughout the past two years. And again, uh, I just want to say that this is a, a great thing for the city. It's funny, when I, when we went through the rating agencies, we didn't have the amount of free cash, so I, I told them that, I said, "You know," I said, "I'll tell you." I, I said, "I, I want to be conservative in my numbers," and I said, "I'm going to say $1 million of free cash." So I was off, so. But we got that rating without even them knowing this. I notified them, uh, we have our, what we call annually, what every city in town has to do, is update their financial information, as happens, we do, uh, this week, uh, March 27th. And in there, one of the things I'll be putting in is the fact that we were certified at $3.2 million. Also, let's look at it also, our Water and Shore Enterprise Fund shows the efficiency that is being run at, and there was $101,000, uh, um, uh, free cash in, uh, the, in that, in that fund. So the general fund and the Water Enterprise Fund, uh, being run solidly right now, and if we can keep this pace up, uh, it'll be great. So if you have any questions, I'm here for any questions.
Mr. President.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Director. Councillor Penta.
Just one quick comment, I mean, it's, it's great to have teamwork, and like you said, there's a lot of players involved in it. And George, I know you wear several hats in this city, um, and I just want to commend you on, I mean, you don't get the recognition you deserve. You're more behind the scenes, you're the treasurer, collector, financial director. I mean, I can keep going on, so, uh, keep up the good work, and hopefully we can pay you for, for what you really deserve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Director for the good news. It's always nice to get good news up here. I think we're about to go back to the regular business. Madam Clerk.
Calendar item number two, joint utility meeting with Comcast National Grid and Verizon to discuss double poles and potholes.
Gentlemen, I'm sorry you had to wait so long tonight. These things happen occasionally, and, uh, you got pushed to the rear. Welcome again.
Certainly understand. Dan Cameron from National Grid, offices at 170 Medford Street, Malden.
Uh, Tim Kelly, Comcast Government Relations, having an office at 426 East First Street, Boston, Massachusetts, 02127.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Councillor Guanasso.
Welcome, gentlemen. I, I have a request from, to you, Dan. It's in reference to Emmanuel Street, pole number 2672. Uh, the homeowner that's near that pole called 18 days ago, and they said that there's a work brought out. Now, 18 days to get this thing done?
It's a streetlight?
It's a streetlight. It's pole number 2672. I think that's unacceptable, 18 days. And we, we're, we're doing yeoman's job here, you know, removing these, uh, poles, and when a constituent calls, I think that maybe we should have some sort of dialogue with the people who respond to these, that, you know, to make them do a little quicker than that. I mean, that's, there's, there's illegal activity, what the seriousness of this is, is there's illegal activity occurring next door, and, uh, the man and his family are frightened by the situation, so they need it as well lit as possible to illuminate the area, to maybe wad off these individuals from doing this activity.
Okay. Uh, councillor, I got the number 2672, Emmanuel Street?
Emmanuel, Emmanuel. Thank you, Dan.
Councillor Janino.
Thank you. Um, I was a little surprised when I drove by Revere Street and saw that the pole in front of the Paul Revere School is still there. So in about six months, we're going to be approaching the third school year since this has been brought up, and it's really unacceptable. It's, it's dangerous. You have a pole attached to another pole with a 2x4, and it's starting to get really frustrating, because you still have cars having a hard time seeing around that corner, and, uh, all the problems still exist. So I'd like if we could make that kind of a priority on the list. This really, really, really needs to get addressed immediately. Thank you.
Councillor, the, uh, the good news is, it's in Comcast's bucket. We've had it, it's, uh, two weeks now. I can assure you, the next time I come in front of you, it will, we will be transferred off the pole.
Thank you.
Councillor Haas.
Dan, uh, I just want to commend you and your staff, uh, on Fenley Street. I firmly lived up there. They, they changed three or four poles immediately, so thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Nowosowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I have good news and I have bad news. The good news is, I want to thank you for taking care of that pole on North Shore Road. It's been six years, and as soon as National Grid got their electric off the top, the rest of it came down, and within two weeks, the pole was gone. I don't know why it took six years, but I can, I can relate to, uh, Councillor Janino on, I'm waiting a long time, so. But thank you for that, and, uh, also the one on Campbell Ave., which was done so quickly. But on the one on Campbell Ave., I believe, I thought there was a streetlight on there.
Fire light.
And that's not on there now.
I saw your email on that today.
Okay, yeah, I, so, um, also pole 392, which is not on the list, on Beach Street at the corner of Ocean Avenue, there's a double pole there, there are no wires on it, it's been cut short in both ends, and I've been talking about this for about four months now. And I don't know if it was, it's a Verizon or a National Grid one, so if you can still follow that up with Stan and see-
I will.
-who's going to handle that one. Uh, Blake Street, 1169, that pole's been gone for three months, still showing up on the PLM. Uh, 483 Beach Street, I don't, I know I've spoken about this for the last year, uh, I don't know why it happened, but, um, Verizon moved their wires before anybody else above them. It's across, um, Beach Street and VFW Parkway intersection right by the Dunkin' Donuts. And pole number 48 on the Revere Beach Parkway at North Shore Road, it's another double pole that has no wires on it, that's, it's still on there, you know? The pole's still there, so it's still on the list. I think you said that was yours. And, um, other than that, thank you very much. Good job so far.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Question to, uh, National Grid, uh, that pole on, uh, Elman Library, is that, are you transferred off of that yet? That's the one, it's on, in the, it's on Library, right at Elman. And, uh, we all know that, uh, until, uh, you get off of that pole, Verizon or anybody else can't get off of it.
Uh, looks like, there's two on Library, and we, we are off both of them.
You're off both of them. Would you, could, could you convey that information to Verizon then, so that they could, uh, move ahead, and any other entities that may be on the pole?
Okay, looks like, um, fire alarm is on one of them.
Okay. Well, maybe that's part, maybe that's part of the problem. Now, do you convey that information to Fire Alarm?
Through the PLM report we do, yes.
Yeah, okay, because that, that pole there is in a very precarious-
Okay.
...state, and we want to get it off of there as quickly as possible. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councillor Penta.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, my, I got one issue, it's not with the pole, it's on Winthrop Ave., there's a telephone streetlight. Winthrop Ave., it's pole number 1,000. I've had an issue with this pole for eight months now. The city clerk even sent an email out to you, you sent an email back saying, a couple weeks later, it was fixed. I have a woman out there, she's nice enough to call me on a weekly basis. The thing was fixed, then it went out, now she tracked it seven days this week. It was on two days, was off the last four days. So there's something more than a bulb problem there. It's going to be a ballast or something, but it's at, the pole is actually affecting seven different streets here. It's a very, very active, it's right near Shaw Beaches almost, but it's the last pole on Winthrop Ave. If you can look into that, because it's, and if they go by and say it's working, it may be working at instant, but she keeps a track of it every night. And she, you know, she calls me on it, I thank her, and her frustration is wearing my frustration, so I appreciate if that can be taken care of.
Pole number, 1,000?
Okay, that looks like, uh, that almost wraps it up, except for me. I've got a pole on Atwood Street, and I don't have a number for it, and I'm not sure what the problem is. Hawson Atwood. Now, we got the information on it. I was probably supposed to take care of that six months or a year ago. It's like, uh, it's like having a shoemaker, you know, as a friend. Anyways, uh, if you can look into that for me, I'd appreciate it. And thank you, gentlemen, again, this, uh, this is working out just peachy. See you next month.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Calendar item number three, hearing called is ordered upon the application of National Grid for the installation of conduance and, conduits and protecting fixtures on Marshview Terrace to service the city of Revere pump station.
Name an address for the record, please. Or I should say, proponents.
Michael Menides for National Grid, 170 Medford Street, Malden, Massachusetts.
Tell us what you're doing, uh?
Yep, there is a, um, a pump station that we will be running, or proposing to run two 3-inch conduits from an existing pad mount transformer between number seven and number nine Marshview Terrace to the center island where the pump station will be.
Great, thank you. Any other proponents, people in favor of this? Hearing, seeing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents, people opposed to this? Hearing, none, seeing none, close that side of the hearing. Any councillors? Councillor Haas.
Can we take this up this evening?
I believe we can.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, uh, move to approve? All in favor, all opposed? All done?
Thank you.
Calendar item number four, report of the Public Safety Subcommittee.
Uh, the Public Safety Subcommittee met, uh, I'm filling in for councillor, Chairman, Councillor Patch, who happens to be away. Public Safety Committee met this afternoon to approve the few storage licenses for the Holly Davidson, uh, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and the committee reported this unfavorably, and, uh, I'm asking the councillor for approval. We need two separate votes on this. On the roll call.
Shall the city council approve the Chapter 148 license at 649-655 Squire Road- Shall the City Council approve the Chapter 148 license at 649-655 Squire Road for the above-ground storage of flammable and combustible liquids in a commercial garage? Counselor Rigo?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Janino is absent. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Patch is absent. Counselor Penta?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Reardon?
Yes.
Yes. And Council President Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. The Chapter 148 license for 649-655 Squire Road has been approved. And for the second license, shall the City Council approve the Chapter 148 license at Squire Rear Road for the above-ground storage of flammable and combustible liquids? Counselor Rigo?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Janino is absent. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Patch is absent. Counselor Penta? Yes. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Reardon?
Yes.
Yes. And Council President Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes.
I think Counsel Janino would like to vote yes.
Counselor Janino voting yes for this Chapter 148 license, and the Chapter 48 license has been approved for Squire Rear Road. Calendar item number five. Report of the Zoning Subcommittee.
Mr. Chairman Reardon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Can everybody see me okay? Okay, just wanted to make sure. If Al Fiore was sitting here, you wouldn't be able to see him. Mr. President, this afternoon, at a lengthy Subcommittee meeting, the Zoning Subcommittee met to consider two items, the first being PU-DU-14-01 petition for 29th Avenue Development for the installation of a planned unit development comprising forty-two residential condominiums within the Light Industrial District at 29th Avenue Riviera. We, in deference to the fact that Counselor Patch is away and the very highly controversial nature of this matter, the Chair chose to keep it in committee until our next meeting next Monday, when Counselor Patch is expected, and I would anticipate that the matter will go forward for a full City Council vote. As to C-14-02, this is a petition from Victoria Vanacore for the Riviera Adult Day Healthcare Center, 765 Riviere Beach Parkway, seeking permission from the Riviera City Council to modify a non-conforming structure for the purpose of expanding the operation of an existing adult daycare facility at 765 Riviere Beach Parkway, Riviera, Massachusetts. Mr. President, this matter was, again, considered by the full committee. The Chair neither requested nor received any recommendation on it, so I'll be reporting this out this evening for a vote. I will add that the site plan review has suggested three separate contingencies. One, that the parking lot must be striped to provide for twenty-two parking spaces with no parking of vans or employee vehicles along Mill Street or Taft Street. Two, the plans must be stamped and approved by the Fire Department prior to the issuance of a building permit. Three, a designated no-parking fire lane must be maintained along the front of the building for accessibility at all times by the Fire Department and ambulance. In addition to those conditions, Your Honor, a couple of conditions were recommended by various members of the Subcommittee, and I would ask that the City Council entertain those on the floor this evening. One from Counsel Guanasso and one from the Ward Counsel, Counsel Penta.
Mr. President, I don't know if one of those repeated.
I think we'll have them repeated so that they'll be read into the record as part of the special permit.
Okay. The condition I want to have put on, that there'll be no entrance or exits to the site from vendors, employees, anybody being dropped off there. The only entrance and exit would be from the parkway only. Mill Street is not to be used. And if it is, the default on their permit, and this permit is null and void. Now, I know Counsel Guanasso wanted to go six months, but if they do it in three days, we should be able to revoke this. So I don't know if Counsel... I would gladly go along with six months, but why even give them that latitude?
Counsel Guanasso?
Mr. President, my thought was that they give six-month contingent upon, you know, review, and that way, we put them on notice that, you know, this is an effect. We're watching. We're reviewing everything that you have in place, and it's up to the Ward Counsel. I don't have any objection.
No, I understand what your concerns were and everything else, but I think it's a little more strict the way we're doing it, if it's...
If you think it's stricter, then that's the route I want to take.
I'd appreciate that. Thank you, Counsel.
I withdraw the sub-motion.
And there's no parking on Mill Street or Taft Street also. I believe that's in the site plan review condition, but I just want to stipulate that that is a very strict condition that they were supposed to abide by before. But thank you, Mr. President, for your leanings, and thank you to Chairman of the Zoning Committee for holding this over and taking us up tonight. Thank you.
Mr. President, I would move that we approve the special permit with the three conditions of the site plan review that were already discussed moments ago, and also with Counsel Penta's condition, that all deliveries, all maintenance people, all employees, and to the extent possible, all of the patients and clients enter and exit the building through Riviere Beach Parkway and not Mill Street or any of the adjoining streets.
I agree with that. I did like the six-month review anyway, even though if they do the egregious thing and don't follow... I think we still need to review this permit in six months because of what the history has been in the past. Now, they may not do the egregious things, but there may be something else we want to review anyway. So I still like to keep that if everybody's in agreement with that.
I would include that as a condition, as part of my motion.
Great. Okay. On the special permit...
Mr. President, just one other thing. I have no problem with that.
Counsel Penta.
Can I add one more condition that...
Go right ahead.
If there are trucks, delivery trucks, and everybody else coming down Mill Street, that these people get fined.
I agree a hundred percent.
And you don't have to wait six months and, you know...
No, I agree a hundred percent. I agree with that also. I just want the review process to still be in, that we look at this every six months to see how it's going. But I think if they're doing anything, they should be fined that day. I agree.
Thank you.
On the special permit.
Shall the City Council approve special permit C-14-02 for 765 Riviere Beach Parkway, subject to the findings of site plan review and the City Council as reported by Counselor Reardon? Counselor Rigo?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Patch is absent. Counselor Penta?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Reardon?
Yes.
Yes. And Council President Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. The special permit has been granted, subject to the findings and conditions of site plan review and the City Council. Calendar item number six. Communication from the Mayor relative to Harbor Master and Assistant Harbor Master reappointments.
Appointments.
Calendar item number seven. Communication from the City Planner relative to a resolution for improvements to Louis Pasteur Playground and De Salvo Park Playground.
Mr. President.
Counsel Penta.
Can we read the communications? It'll take five minutes to read and just vote as a resolution. That grant money was given to the city, and it just needs a resolution, vote from the City Council. Thank you.
Dear members, attached is a resolution that must be passed by the City Council in order for the City of Riviera to receive grant funds from the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs under the Our Common Backyards Program. Under this grant program, the City will receive grant funds totaling $200,000 for the replacement of playground equipment at Louis Pasteur Playground and De Salvo Park Playground, AKA Chico Charoloni Playground. These funds are being awarded to the City of Riviera as a result of successful grant application filed by the Department of Planning and Community Development. It is expected that the playground improvements will be completed by the fall of this year. Thank you for your prompt attention to this matter, as the resolution must be passed prior to the City entering into a grant agreement with the Commonwealth. Respectfully, Frank Stringi.
On the resolution. All in favor, all opposed? So voted.
Calendar item number fifteen. Communication from the Mayor relative to the appointment of Elizabeth Dixon, 54 Wade Park, to the Election Commission.
Appointments.
Calendar item number twenty. Communication from the Mayor relative to the appointment of John Bertolo as a constable.
Appointments.
Calendar item number twenty-one. Motion presented by Counselor Powers, that the Mayor requests the DCR to install a catch basin on the easterly side of the Lineway between Alden and Bickford Avenues. This is an area where water collects and causes a danger to the general public.
Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think the motion more or less speaks for itself. It's an area that is constantly covered with water every time it rains. It attracts mosquitoes in the wintertime. It's dangerous. It ices over and could be a serious accident down there. So I would hope that the Mayor would send that request to DCR, and they would take care of that as quickly as possible. Thank you, Mr. President.
On the motion. All in favor, all opposed? So voted.
Calendar item number twenty-two. Motion presented by Counselor Powers, that the Mayor requests the DCR to install a handicap sign on the westerly side of 505 Riviere Beach Boulevard.
Speaks for itself. Speaks for itself. On the motion. All in favor, all opposed? So voted.
Calendar item number twenty-three. Motion presented by Counselor Novoselsky, that the Mayor requests Dan Cameron of National Grid to install a new telephone pole at the southeast corner of the intersection of Kimball and Walnut Avenues on the Kimball Ave. side, and to install a floodlight facing to the northwest corner of the intersection.
Counselor Novoselsky.
Speaks for itself, Mr. President.
On the motion. All in favor, all opposed? So voted.
Calendar item number twenty-four. Motion presented by Counselor Novoselsky, that the Mayor requests the DCR Commissioner to approve a right lane, right turn-only regulation at the intersection of Riviera Beach Parkway and Thomas Sella Road, and that the appropriate signage be posted.
Counselor Novoselsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, just a clarification. If everybody knows, when you're going on the Riviere Beach Parkway by the police station on the right-hand lane, there's a marking on the ground that says right turn only. But the state police don't feel it's enough, but it found out it's not even a legal indication. So I'm asking that they make it a right turn only there. There's people going into Beachmont, stop there, and don't let the people go into Suffolk Downs and Thomas Sella Road. So just something we have to do, I guess. Thank you.
Counselor Janino.
Thank you. I've actually got several calls about this, that it might cause more of an issue, since that turn right there is unofficial, because people are cutting each other off at that intersection, because so many people stop and then go around them. So I kind of would like to see this go to either the Traffic Commissioner or Public Safety, so we could talk about it a little bit more, because I think that this might cause some more problems there, if there's a better solution for that intersection, because it's tough. It's kind of like in front of the fire station, where you have a position where people are turning and then crossing to go straight. So I think that there are a couple issues with this, so I would like to see some more information on it. But I appreciate your idea, where you're going with it. So thank you.
I'm just going by the will of the people. You know, they're the ones that are getting in the accident.
Counsel Penta.
Mr. President, I actually agree with both speakers. This has brought up to me several, several times. Unfortunately, people do not pay attention to what's on the road. They probably know it, but they still tend to go in there, and it just... I don't know if it's education, but if everybody followed... And I have disagreements on this with people. They want to debate me on it, that it's not making things go quicker or better. But if everybody followed it, it would, because you're supposed to stay in the right-hand lane if you take a right. Then you hop over the entranceway. You're supposed to hop over to the right again if you're going to Beachmont Station. And I think both Counselors have a great point, but I think Counsel Janino has actually let the experts look at this and come up with maybe something that, you know, we can live with. Thank you.
Public safety.
Calendar item number twenty-five. Motion presented by Counselor Powers, that the Mayor requests the owners of the Wonderland Dog Track to have the graffiti removed from the fencing and buildings located on the property.
Counselor Powers.
Mr. President, as of Friday, that has been done, thankfully.
See, they listen to you. Isn't that nice? Okay, so I guess we don't need to vote on the motion. You want to withdraw it? Okay, it's withdrawn.
Calendar item number twenty-six. Motion presented by Counselor Powers, that the Mayor requests DCR to address the damages to the fence located at 129 Lineway caused by DCR plowing. A claim against the City, file number 14-29, was referred back to the owner of the property, Arlene Hanlon, at said address.
Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. The woman did file a claim with the City. However, the City referred it back to her. The Lineway is an area that is plowed by contractors and/or employees of the DCR, and I think that communication with the Mayor to DCR would affect the compensation necessary to replace the damaged fence. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. On the motion. All in favor, all opposed? So voted.
Calendar item number twenty-seven. Motion presented by Counselors Morabito and Rigo, that the Mayor appoint a Human Rights Commission in accordance with Chapter 9.28 of the Revised Ordinances of the City of Riviera.
Counselor Morabito.
Thank you, Mr. President. This motion came about because lately, we've had some discussion in this council chambers about the Adult Daycare Center, and it's no fact... It's more than fact that the City is very diverse, and this ordinance is already established and was established in 1994 by our colleague, Counselor Haas, who I commend him for making this significant motion. I think it just really should be enforced with this current... With the current Mayor's administration.
Thank you, Counsel. Anybody else? On the motion. All in favor, all opposed? So voted.
Calendar item number twenty-eight. Motion presented by Counselor Rigo, that the Mayor commission a comprehensive classification and compensation study of the City's workforce.
I'm sorry. Counselor Rigo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Very quickly, this is... This study or this type of study is done, or has been done, in quite a few different communities, and I think we would be well-served by seeing how we stack up with our neighbors and some other comparable cities. And I think going forward, we have to start thinking about the fact that we will probably, if we get a casino, see a big increase in our ability to hire, and that kind of plays into your motion regarding a human resource department and the late motion I put in. But I think we would... This is something that can be done relatively cheap, and it can be done by folks who have done it in many other communities, and I think it gives us a good sense of where we are in terms of paying our employees. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Rigo. Counsel Penta.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Counsel bitted the words out of my mouth. I think this does coincide with your motion, and I hope if they hire a human resource person, that they put a lot of classifications in black and white, what they are. I think we're so far behind the times that this has to be done. I don't know what the cost is. I don't know if you get college kids to maybe do this analysis and probably save some money, but the mayor can answer that. But I think we have to go department by department and, you know, work this out that there's, you know, there's, at least we know what you're looking at when you get a job, what your qualifications are. And I think it's a good motion. I'm just curious of what it could cost, but I'm in favor of it.
Counselor Arigo.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Very quickly, the University of Massachusetts actually has a call-in center. They've done it for a few other communities. It's relatively cheap, $10,000, $15,000 maybe. So, and all it takes really is the, their preparation of putting together, looking at comparable cities, and then talking to some staff about their job descriptions. Thank you.
Thank you. On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So voted.
Calendar item number twenty-nine, motion presented by Counselor Zambudo, that the mayor establish by ordinance with approval of the City Council, a full-time human resources department within the City of Revere. Funding for the new department shall be included in the fiscal year 2015 budget.
I thank the council for the latitude of letting me speak from the chair. Notice how I took that authority without asking for it. You noticed it, I don't. The lawyer at the other end noticed it right away. Anyways, I don't look to take credit for something. I'm not reinventing the wheel here. We, at one time, when Mayor Haas had an administration, had, for a short period of time, a human resources director, and it's long overdue. I mean, you know, we're a city with $155 million budget and a slew of employees, and it's absurd that we don't have this. And I think, I'd be very surprised if everybody is not in favor of this, and I know the mayor is, and I know Counselor Arigo has a late motion in that speaks to this, and we can probably combine these, and I'm certainly, so I'm going to call on Counselor Arigo, then Counselor Penta, and then whoever else.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just very quickly, I did submit a late motion that kind of outlined some, an ordinance change that, or an addition to the city ordinances that would basically, that would establish a human resource department or personnel department. We are one of the only cities in probably the Commonwealth that doesn't have one. And when I talk to, when I talk to some colleagues in other cities, they do look at you like you have three heads when you say, oh, we don't have a personnel department. So, I put this, this was actually something that I was working on. I know the mayor had mentioned this before. I forget in what context, but we had talked about a personnel department. I did a little bit of research in terms of ordinances and put this forward. I would be more than happy to combine the two, and I think that would be a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you for your efforts, and I think they should be combined. Counselor Penta.
Mr. President, I'm not against the motion. It's just that this council has certain things it can do and can't do. We cannot add to a budget. We can ask the mayor, recommend, but then here you said shall be the next budget. We cannot, with good faith, honestly, appropriate money, and there's a reason for that. That's why there's a balance in government. I'm not against it. I think it's a great motion, but sometimes we spend a lot of money on the mayor, and then we don't give it to them. So, I mean, you have to have it both ways. We all agree that you need so many things in a city. I mean, I'd like to sit here and right now and put 30 people on DPW, but I can't do that, you know? Anir is with me, but I think these things should be discussed. It was great news tonight with the free cash. These are some things, I mean, we really can't spend it all, but you can move money around. I mean, financial directors, you know, is very wise in how to probably accomplish some of these things. But I mean, just be careful how we word these things, because we don't have that jurisdiction.
I appreciate that, Counselor Penta, and perhaps I could have worded it a little more carefully. I really meant that I'm asking the mayor to appropriate this money for the next budget, and I wasn't telling him to, but I could have wrote, I could have wrote the motion a little differently. But I'm asking him, and I think he'll agree to include this in the next budget, because I know he's tired of having to be the personnel director as mayor, and it's not fair to him or anybody else. So, anyways, I think we're going to combine both these motions. If you want to send it to Ways and Means, we'll send it to Ways and Means. That's, I think, the appropriate place for it, but after Counselor Haas speaks on it.
Thank you, Mr. President. As was mentioned, we are one of the only cities and towns in the Commonwealth without a HR department. This is a no-brainer to vote on. I had one for about two years, two and a half years, and the council removed it right from the budget. You know, we laugh at it, but this person could save Revere a tremendous amount of money, and you have the same policies enacted throughout the whole city. They take care of vacation time, and you standardize all the policies, so everyone is treated equally unfairly. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Haas. And this is one issue that I think we should all try to find a way never to be political on, and I think that we're all on the same page with this, and it's great to see that happen, and so we're going forward Ways and Means. No further business if I hear a motion adjourned. We're adjourned until March 30th, 31st.